Our volume lease, or our volume purchase price should be a little bit lower than that because we do get a discount.
If for some reason we order too many, can we send them back and get the money back?
Typically not. Dr. Blatner may be able to answer that question about regarding if we order too many being able to send them back.
We would not be able to send them back. That's one reason why we're being conservative in the number of reserves that I have. Those are the ones that they crack a screen. We can give them something while we're taking a few days to do that.
Right.
So we've been very low on that number. It's normally around 2 percent you have. We're less than 1 percent, around 1 percent right now to try to accommodate for that.
Have you used up all the spares that were purchased or leased originally? Because we had some spares in that to begin with too, right?
That was, that's accounted for in this. In this number, that 100 number is accounting for the spares. We had 177 prior to this, and so we're really actually reducing that 177 down to 100 and moving those 77 over.
Go.
And I will say, you know, that having the number of spares needed has been greatly reduced with our wave one schools because the students are taking care of the machines. They really, you heard folks talk about last week, they're taking ownership, they're taking care of the device. We have stressed the importance of the costs with the technology and the opportunities that you and others have given the students with this technology, and that certainly reduces the number of spares we need to have on hand. And you're right, we don't want, you know, just a stockpile of machines not being utilized. But the other side of me, having worked in one-to-one environments before, is always aware that, you know, you're going to have students coming in, and we're going to have students very soon who are going to be in digital content, digital courses, and ingrained with this technology within the classrooms. And what we don't want is new students or other students coming in who are sitting waiting for us to order, waiting for us to shift technology around, and that would be unfortunate.
On the cover sheet, so you've got on both of them, 330 are needed, but then in the worksheet you said 510. Does that work the cover sheet wrong, which says 330?
This should be your corrected cover sheet that I had here.
Cover sheet says we need 330 laptops, but then when you do the worksheet it says additional laptops is 510.
Five, 510 is the correct number on the, on the sheets.
He replaced the, he replaced that first one with the second one.
This is revised copy.
Yeah, still has 510.
Yeah, that's, that's my sure.
Well, I figured, I mean, I know we're talking numbers again, but somewhere back in that bank, there's a figure of around $800 per laptop, reduced number, that's, I'm not saying I was saying, $408,000. That's more than I make in a year. I couldn't cover it.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Oh, you're retired. There's no way, like if it's three children in a family, each one still gets a laptop? Like if you had a sixth grader, an eighth grader, and a ninth grader, whatever, they still, if we ran short, would they share or no?
Yes, sir. Each, each child in a one-to-one environment needs to have their own device because each classroom teacher is going to have students logging in and working on assignments and digital content and resources, e-portfolios, e-textbooks. And so during the, during the instructional day, each student will have their own device at home, they'll be working on projects and other information. Although I do agree, when all three of those children are in their household, you know, you could share devices at that point in time, but for individual students working on individual assignments, it certainly does.
Better have one-on-ones.
Yes, sir. But certainly options and, and, you know, ideas to think about and look, look at, and certainly, you know, part of our work that continues on, not just looking at the numbers, but is about sustainability. And, you know, to Mr. Kelly's point, it is, it is about the numbers. But I also think it's about the results, and it, it's about the technology and it's about the learning that's taking place with students, the opportunities to close gaps and the opportunities for students to expand on knowledge with technology and resources that they've never had before as well. I do want to tell you, as we move closer and we utilize more and more of our technology for online testing, we had students in our wave one schools that used this technology this spring for their state testing. And, and that would have been very difficult with only a few laptop carts in our schools or moving, trying to move carts and technology around to have each student have their own device to be able to do their online testing. And now that our end-of-grade tests have to occur the last 10 days of the school year and the, and of course tests occurring the last five days of semester, you can imagine if you have 500, you know, Lake Norman High School, 1,800 students in a building, how difficult it would be to, to schedule all of your students for a three or four-hour online exam with only a few computers and labs or on laptop carts. So this is, you know, going to help us address those issues as well. And then locally, we do benchmark assessments as well, and we're going to move to do those electronically on the computers also, and so students will be able to do those assessments. So again, there's, you know, ways that we'll be reducing other costs of printed materials, printed tests, that you're just not seeing unfortunately when I, when we present these numbers. But I think over time, we'll be able to show you, you know, where the offset savings are. You know, certainly you hear us talk about additional costs for technology or additional costs for computers, but we don't always see the other costs that are being reduced or that are being picked up by the grant as we make our presentations. And I'll do a better job of being clear and, and helping to identify those areas as we move forward.
Well, that's, that's the reason I, at that point, I can end all my statements by saying I have a, what we're doing here is a great deal of trust. All this is like in, in that cloud they talk about, that cloud. But it's all floating around up there, and I'm sincerely hoping and trusting that you and our guru sitting behind you over there has handles on these numbers so that that other foot does not fall. Everything works out, we know the technology is good, we know the device is good, we know we're going to save money in other areas. I understand all that, but I'm trusting that you work the numbers out so that other foot doesn't come in and somebody says, "Oh, we need XXX, and we don't have that."
I, I think that's a great point, Mr. Kelly, and I will tell you, you know, our process has been what we did last week, what we're doing now, what we'll continue to do is keep you informed. I mean, we're certainly, as I said, trying to hit a moving target right now. Those numbers are subject to fluctuate each week as students enroll or withdraw from the district, but we're doing our best to put experience and to put data and statistics from multiple sources together to analyze, to, to help predict what we, what we might need, but also keeping in mind what you've, what you've talked about is, you know, not having a purchase and then just have devices that are not needed. We, we certainly are at the minimum in, in all of our calculations. There's no buffer room, there's no excess, there's no additional built-in. You see, we've dropped the number of spares from 177 to 100, which is below, you know, what's recommended, but we're doing everything we can to assist in being conservative and being responsible in what we've presented to you.
Well, I respect the, the position that you're in very much, and certainly none of us are envious of wanting to be in that position, because I know you've, you've been the target of a lot of questions, a lot of, but I think what we need to understand, all of us as the, the general public, is that this embarkation is opening up a whole new paradigm of, of learning as well as teaching, and there's a lot of unknowns when we undertake such a, a great task. I commend you on behalf of the board for the work that you've done, I think, in terms of planning and trying to be conservative with this issue as well as the other issues that we undertake in our school district, which is generally underfunded all the way around. So I think that we, we appreciate that, but because we are underfunded in other areas, we have to be extremely careful, and I think that's where these comments come from, and just emphasize and to be absolutely sure that what we spend is absolutely necessary. But the other side of the coin, and what I certainly appreciate, is that I know you've been conservative where we've been so far, but if we put us, ourselves in a position where we leave even one child out to where they're not able to have that laptop when class starts, then we've not accomplished our goal, in my opinion. When we undertook a one-to-one initiative, that really meant what it said, is that each child, and I know that's an impossible, completely moving target at any one time, so I commend you for what you're, you're doing and still trying to be conservative at the same time. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the recommendation to purchase the 510 MacBook Air laptops from the sources that was presented to us.
I, I will make the motion to do that. Just letting you know, you know, everybody's watching us and asking us lots of questions about this, so that's why we're giving you a hard time about this. We're in, you know, where it's going to be a, it's going to be a heroin ride, but I'm willing to buckle in and, and see it through, so I will make that motion.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation to purchase the 510 MacBooks. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to vote for this, and I'm going to, like someone said before, I'm going to put a lot of trust in you, Mr. Abilay. I trust your numbers, but that's a lot of computers to buy that the general public, like Ms. Bonna said, are saying, "How did you miss it that bad?" And I'm not saying you missed it, and I know numbers change and I know student population changes, but I'm, I'm going to vote for it and I'm going to wish you the best, and I, I hope you're right.
Any other comments? Not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to the child nutrition bids for 2014-15. Ms. Tina Wilson.
Good evening, Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I've come to you again this year. Child nutrition has the opportunity to renew their bids, existing bids, for one more year, and after going back with my vendors, all of them have agreed to rebid at current pricing of the, this past year except for one, and that was Sarah Lee, as we discussed last week, and they are going up on their prices. And I believe one of you asked me to crunch some numbers, and I did do that, and I looked at our usage that we use this school year as of the end of May, and based on that, we had used a little over $87,000 toward our bread products this school year. And I took that same usage and added in the increase, and doing that, we're looking at spending a little over $88,000 next school year, which is an increase of about $858 in our bread products. I still don't think that's bad, especially considering that all our other vendors have locked in their prices for us, and we're also going to continue to be in the North Carolina Procurement Alliance, which also helps us get better pricing on volume food. So I do recommend that we renew all our bids this school year for the 14-15 school year. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the recommendation from Ms. Wilson and approve the chemical ice cream beverage and bread products bid.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the continuation of these bids for the child nutrition products. Any second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If all of those in favor, this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to technology again. Dr. Blatner, this time Technology Department Blade Server bids.
Yes, before you have, we discussed with the committee the whole, we have a bid from AlphenuAmerican for Dell Blade Server. This was, we, I also gave you an update, there's a Golden Ron sheet that was placed in front of you that has the servers which this, this Blade Server will be replacing. There are 11 servers, and you can see in the far right, it tells you the age of these servers. The youngest one is about three and a half years old, and it ranges all the way to seven years old on these servers. They're all out of warranty, and that is why we projected to, in our, this current budget, put in to do an upgrade and replacement of these machines. There, we needed this because a lot of the machines we have there can no longer support the updates that are coming, like Transportation Management System, they have an update coming, and we do not have the resources to put that one in place. So we've put this forward, we've looked at, we've bid this twice because the first time we bid it, it did not come with something that would, would handle the growth of our system. It would handle what we have right now, but would not handle anything that came forward. So we rebid this out to, to there. This is not something that's related to impact, this is related to seven different departments and in the functionings of what, of what they were doing and was put in the budget for that. The bid came in with the hardware for $13,000. There's a second bid you see in there that is for the software and for the installation. The software for it is $32,000, and the installation is up to $25,000. One part of this contract is, is as we're bringing this new technology in, which does a lot of redundancy and a lot of things to keep things running and not have downtime, we need to train our staff on it. So our staff will work alongside the installation staff and the transferring of the data over, and they'll learn this. So as we have 11 servers we're bringing over, they might get it after the fifth server, and then the remaining six, we can bring over ourselves, and we will not be billed for that. So that'll just be an up to $25,000 in there, and we might, we will be experiencing some savings as we go in there. The budget for this was $150,000, and the total that we're asking for is $94,440.92. And I'll entertain any questions you have at this time.
I'll just compliment you on being, having some good foresight, looking forward to the future and staying in the budget. Good job.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion that we approve this Technology Department Blade Server bid request.
I make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the wireless density project. Dr. Blatner?
This is a, this is an upgrade to bring more density to our wireless. Right now, when we installed our wireless for the first time, it was one access point, one wireless connection per every two classrooms. That is what we needed at that time, is what the standard was for minimal standards. As we move forward, as we did move forward, we found that students, the demand for an educational environment requires more than that. And whether we went with the impact grant or whether we chose to do Bring Your Own Technology, whichever way we chose to get to one-to-one, this would have been necessary to take place in our, in our schools. This is actually in next year's budget, it is allocated next year's budget, but it's before you today because we want to try to complete this work over the summer and start in July 1. And what this will do is that the middle schools and high schools, it'll put one access point per classroom, it'll, on average, it comes out to about 20,000 per school to get to this point. That includes installation, the switches, and everything that's required for doing the programming of those switches. The, we had two bids for this, this was the bid that came in lowest, and the contract amount is $273,386. I shared in the committee, the hold, we've worked with this company in the past, they've installed our stuff, they've done a good job. They also use local lenders in our area to do the installation, so it keeps money here in Iredell. And I'll happy to entertain any questions on this.
Again, this was budgeted for $350,000, so you came in quite a bit under.
Yes, I did, thank you.
But you're still an expensive guy.
My wife tells me that.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept.
We've got a motion to accept this proposal for the wireless density project. There's a second.
A second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on then to part of our curriculum, budgeting the TeachScape contract. Dr. Taylor.
Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, I bring for you tonight the annual contract for TeachScape. TeachScape is an online professional development tool that we have used in the district for approximately six to seven years now. Teachers can access professional development modules online. There are many of those that are used for our new teachers as well as teachers for ongoing professional development. We also use this as part of our district classroom walkthrough tool, so we can enter those, classroom walkthroughs through an app, and they go automatically into a database, and schools can pull from that information. We also have two reflect cameras that teachers use throughout the course of the, the school year to videotape lessons. Many of our administrators use those to videotape lessons as part of National Board certification requirements, ongoing reflection and professional development use as well. So be glad to answer any questions you may have about this contract.
I think for the public's interest, the funding you see here is not coming out of our local.
Correct. There is no funding out of local. We have typically pulled from a variety of different sources as the data from this tool is used in many different ways, and the resources are used in many different ways. They're used from professional development for our teachers. We also use some of the classroom walkthrough data as indicators for several of our other grant projects as well. So they do pick up a portion of that.
I think it's commendable, honestly, that we've got a way and a method that seems to work for our teachers to have a way to provide some of their own professional development. As we all know, we've got very little funding for teachers to go outside. And I know one time when we were receiving our regional accreditation of our schools several years ago, Tara Cashin was on the board with me then, and we sat in with a group of reviewers who came, and their largest criticism of our district was that we did not provide opportunities for more of our teachers and administrators to go outside our system for their own professional development and continued education. That's something that I know we get criticized for as, as any money we spend on professional development, but in this age of no salary increases for our teachers and a lot of other challenges that they face, one being opportunities to go outside our system to really see what's happening in other areas, that I, I commend our system and those of you in administration for providing leadership and opportunities for continued training. Well, we all as professionals need that for our own personal stimulation and to bring in new ideas and to keep us all up to date. So I think for $102,000 to provide that training for the teachers in our district is, is a commendable thing, and especially when we don't have to bring it out of our own personal budgets.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the approval of the TeachScape purchase.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to approve the TeachScape purchase. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that motion carries. Thank you. We have a Mitchell Community College recommendation. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Dr. Tim Brewer, president of Mitchell Community College, has submitted the name of Dr. Ralph Bentley for your consideration for a renewal term on their Board of Trustees. Dr. Bentley has expressed his interest and willingness to continue to serve in that capacity for another term. I would also add that Dr. Bentley has served with distinction the interest of ISS on the Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, so I submit his name tonight for your consideration and approval.
Make a motion, we accept. Recommendation, Dr. Brewer. Second.
Motion and a second. Recommendation to appoint Dr. Ralph Bentley back to the Mitchell Community College Board as our representative. If no further discussion or comments, entertain a motion, I mean, excuse me, entertain a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that motion carries. All right, let's move on to the committee, committee funds, honors band fees. Ms. White.
Thank you. I should say committed funds, just to be clear. Part of our accounting regulations requires that if the board wants to set aside funds to be used for a specific purpose, that the board take action to do so. We have been collecting money from participants or applicants for the honors band program, and as such, we'd like to make sure that whatever money has been collected that's going to carry over to next year, that the board will commit to use those funds for the reasons stipulated for the honors band program only. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the recommendation of Ms. White for the committed special revenue funds for the honor, honors band.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No motion carries. Then next, we have Diana Eller to present the primetime rate increase proposal.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board, and Mr. Johnson. As you know, primetime for kids operates the after-school daycare program for the Iredell State School. This consists of 17 five-star sites serving approximately 587 children. Due to the estimated expense increase of over $12,000 related to employee benefits for the 2014-15 school year, and, which is a total increase of over $17,000 from the 2012 to the 2014 school year, we're requesting a $15 per month rate increase for our tuition rates. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the primetime rate increase proposal.
Somebody? Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we come to quite a few policy approvals. We had first readings last month, second readings this month. We've got some from our areas of operations, some from areas of curriculum, and some from personnel. We've discussed these in quite a bit of detail over the past month or so. I'll ask Dr. Taylor to come up and represent the first group and present, ask questions, whatever you want to do.
I think we skipped Melissa. I think we skipped Melissa.
Did we skip one?
We skipped Melissa. We can, we can do these and come back to it if you like, since you very got those pulled up.
I just want to say, though, that I really like Ms. Eller's jacket tonight. She has really good taste. So I'd like to go after Ms. Eller, since we have matching outfits.
Okay. You go right ahead. I'm sorry I missed you there. That one just crept in.
Okay. So this is second reading for policy 2130, board member compensation and expenses. I do think there was a correction to the policy that was included in your packet. I was not at the committee, the whole meeting, but it's my understanding that we did decide to change the approval for board member expense requests from the superintendent to the board chairman. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that change was not reflected in your original packet, but I think you do have a corrected policy at your table tonight.
Aye.
So do you want to have the corrected policy? Or if not, you're clear on what that change is? It's one word.
It'll be approved by the board chairman and the superintendent.
Not and, just the board chairman, for board member expenses.
I thought we talked about and superintendent.
Well, I think it follows from the board chairman. If you read on down, it, it goes to the board chairman, and then we'll go through the process to the superintendent, and then approves it, yeah.
Yeah, then, yeah, finally approves it. I see it, yeah.
Okay, so we're, we're correct, okay.
Yep. Gives us a little more transparency. Like having two signatures, a good thing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we make the revision of policy code 2130 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Dr. Taylor now, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Before you, you have policies K through O on the
Before you, you have policies K through O on the agendas. These have been presented for the prior two months and there have been no comments from the public on any of these policies. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have about them.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we pass K through O in one motion.
Do we have a motion or a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that motion carries. Can we move on to the next few?
Yes, the next three policies on your agenda are regarding testing and accountability and graduation requirements. These policies have also been before you for the past two months and there have been no public comments regarding these policies either. Be glad to answer any questions.
And I believe we missed P on the last one. Did we? But the motion, I believe, stated K through O and so P is the free and reduced.
Oh, I'm sorry, P is on the back.
Second reading. So, we probably need to add P with our next.
We took T out.
P.
Oh, P.
It should be Q, I mean, it should be K through P. Sorry about that.
Thought I said K through O. K through O.
P is on the back.
So, you're saying P through?
So, if you want to include P, Q, R, and S on the second vote?
I'll make the motion that we include P, Q, R, and S in another motion and accept those in total.
Second, Mr. Kelly's motion.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will need our agenda referred to as we note in our minutes the approval of these motions since they refer to specific policies as those of you can see. Now, item T has been deleted, so Dr. Lassane, if you want to move through the rest.
Okay, we have second readings for U through double C for the HR-related policies. I've had no comments on these policies, so we are asking that they are approved per the recommendation of the North Carolina School Boards Association.
I make that motion that we accept these recommendations and changes to the board policy.
Is that U through double C?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If you're not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we'll come back to Dr. Kenny Miller about the lottery applications.
Y'all went through those quick. And I appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Mr. Johnson? Let me give you a little, I'll just give you a little background since this was added to the agenda. The lottery applications have to be in Raleigh by June the 25th. They did not post our third quarter proceeds until after May the 25th, so it's impossible for us to get them in in May. Would have liked to. Normally, they do post those in May. So, these applications that I'm presenting to you tonight are to finish out our budget for this year and they were projects that we were recommending from lottery proceeds and there are four. These totaled four hundred and forty-five thousand, I believe, total and it was budgeted in our budget this year from lottery proceeds. The first project is our debt service for our upgrade to our mechanical controls at several of our schools, Central Elementary, Brawley Middle, Shepherd Elementary, South Iredell, North Iredell. And what this is, DDC controls. These are digital controls for our HVAC systems and we've been upgrading those over the last several years and this is part of that package. That total was two hundred and four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The second is a paving project we did in conjunction with Cloverleaf and it was for an all-weather play area and auxiliary parking surface at Cloverleaf. The total project was sixty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. The third project is a water sewer debt service that we have on Woodland Heights. This is the last pavement and it was to bring water and sewer to Woodland Heights approximately five years ago. This is the fifth and final pavement and it is a hundred and thirteen thousand ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And the fourth and final project is a paving project to create a new outlet on the Dooley Road, a double-wide outlet. This was recommended by DOT in Raleigh and the total for that package was sixty-six thousand and eighty-five dollars. Is that right? Sixty-five dollars, I'm sorry. But the total of these four projects is, like I said, approximately four hundred and forty-five thousand and would complete our budget for this year from lottery proceeds. Anything we budget next year then will be our fourth quarter moving forward. Be glad to answer any questions.
Dr. Miller, even though I despise the lottery and I think it's a horrible way to fund schools, I commend you for the way that you keep up with the lottery money and the way that you allocate. I think you do a good job of that.
Thank you very much. Be glad to answer any questions.
So, they didn't have this in May?
Correct.
And so, we're getting it today instead of last week's Cal meeting?
They did not post it in time to get it to the Cal meeting last week.
Do they not know how we operate?
I don't believe so.
Send them a note.
In fact, I called Raleigh because I keep track of that. In fact, I have it set up where it pops up on my computer when they change anything in that fund and so it wasn't popping up and it wasn't popping up and it wasn't popping up. So, I called Raleigh to find out and the gentleman in Raleigh is a super guy named Ken Phelps and Ken's like, "They haven't given it to me yet to post." He says, "I'm expecting it." We emailed me back and said that it should be coming any day, so they posted it. I guess the posting probably was about a week or so ago, but it was just not in time for us to get it to you.
All right, with that being said, do we have a motion to approve the lottery application recommendations for Dr. Miller? Still move?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Thank you.
Next, go on to item EE, the resolution recommendation from the 2014 proposed bond project.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cash. We're excited. We have projects that have been on the books for several years that are important projects for us in moving forward in our capital budget. And let me say, for the public and for the press, we have two different streams of money. We have current expense and we have capital and they're separate and we have drastic needs in our current expense, we know that. Our capital budget is a different stream of money and it comes through different sources and we've been working on trying to get a lot of these projects done over the last several years. We've been pecking away at it, but some of them are just too large. We can't handle them without help from the county and the county, in a positive way, has agreed to investigate a bond. One of the things they will need from us is a bond resolution saying that we would like to take part in that bond. And so, we're excited and we're positive about the fact that we have five very good projects on the books that we think are important to do in the next several years. Those projects are, number one project, of course, everybody knows Cool Springs. You know, that project's been on the books for a long time. Second project is a combination of North Iredell and South Iredell and it is to raise, basically tear down their old arts buildings and auditoriums, which have been there for over fifty years, and replace them with a modern state-of-the-art arts and classroom. We're going to add some classrooms in too, particularly with South Iredell's overcrowding. This will help us to get South Iredell some more classrooms. Our third project is a new State School Middle School, which will be on the Third Creek Campus. And in State School Middle, we will upfit for the IB program that is at Northview. As many people probably don't know, Northview is an elementary school that we pretty much made it work for a middle school, but will have no room for growth and it has no gymnasium and has a lot of needs there for the middle school. The fourth and final project is the similar situation at Mount Morn. We would build a new Brawley Middle School on the Woodland Heights campus and Brawley would move to that location on the Brawley Peninsula and then Brawley Middle School would become a central IB program and give us room for growth in that program in the Southern End. So, those are our four projects, actually five projects, but we grouped South Iredell and North Iredell together. So, I would recommend, I'm going to ask, if you will, Mr. Johnson, if you would read the resolution? I don't have a copy right here with me.
Yes, you will.
This resolution reads as follows. The Iredell State School Schools District Board of Education hereby requests that the Board of Commissioners of Iredell County adopt an order authorizing general obligation bonds of the county and the calling of a referendum they are on for seventy-nine million five hundred thousand dollars, at which such order will be submitted to the qualified voters of Iredell County. The question to be put before the voters shall be substantially as follows. Shall the order adopted on June the 9th, 2014 authorize, authorizing not exceeding seventy-nine million five hundred thousand dollar school bonds of Iredell County, North Carolina, for the purpose of providing funds, together with any other available funds, for erecting additional school buildings, remodeling, enlarging, and reconstructing existing school buildings, providing necessary utilities and acquiring necessary land and equipment therefor, in order to provide additional school facilities for the Iredell State School District in the county of Iredell, and authorizing the levy of taxes in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and the interest on said bonds be approved. And this is being put up tonight for a vote, June the 9th, 2014.
And I would like this thing off. We feel very confident in our numbers. Rob Jackson, who's in our construction department, has done this many, many times over the last decade, has worked the numbers and worked the numbers and we feel really, really good about our numbers, our projects, the practicality of those projects and how those will benefit our students. So, I would ask the board to approve the resolution. Be glad to answer questions.
Questions or comments about the resolution?
I can't, why is there a question mark at the end of that?
Because it is a question.
It is a question to them?
It is a question being put to the voters.
So, again, just, it's all rhetoric, of course, but this, we didn't get this last Monday night either. Do they not know how we operate either?
No, I'm afraid this one was.
County doesn't either, is that what you're saying?
This was thrust on us very quickly. They have a very, very tight timeline with the ability to get this on the ballot and go through all of the processes and everything they have to go through. We met with Facilities Task Force. We reported out to you at the Cal meeting about Facilities Task Force and we had set up meetings with the county to talk about the projects and the cost. The county, in the meantime, was investigating the timeline and what they found out is their timeline was a lot closer and a lot tighter than they expected. So, in a meeting with Ron Smith this past week, we were sort of given this timeline. So, we're trying to do our best to meet that timeline for them.
Make a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. And just to note, this isn't all of our facilities needs. This is the top, this is the top five.
Those are not. This is just the top projects as we see them that are needed right now.
I was just going to make a comment, having served on the task force. The last two times we had a task force, one was back before the proposed bond resolution that passed in the 2006 area and then this most recent one that was convened in 2012, I believe, 2011, 12. And we reviewed our school capital needs, most of which are still the same now as they were projected to be in the 2012 resolution from the task force. We had a member of the, or two members of the commissioners serving on that task force with us, also representatives from the Mooresville Grade School District and representatives from Mitchell Community College, and all had input into that. The recommendation was made back in 2012 by the task force to the commissioners through the school boards that we try to put this on a ballot this fall then. So, there's been quite a bit of time, but the commissioners, with all due respect to them, felt that with their economic downturn, not responding back in a positive direction as quickly as they had anticipated, continuing to wait month by month, year by year, to the point that it's now come to a fairly acute, close time process. I want to commend the Mooresville District, I think, in getting the attention of the commissioners to go ahead and put pressure on them because we have all tried in several meetings over the past two years. I mean, just so the public understands, the school superintendents and board chairs of both the Mooresville Grade School District and Iredell State School met individually with each commissioner last summer and had discussions about their, and answered questions about possibly putting this on the vote for this fall and we were not successful in getting that done. So, I think the conditions have come before the county with some very critical needs of Mooresville with their high school and the building and with the most critical of our needs, they were able to put together a possible resolution for us to consider, but when they came up with that and working with the local government commission and other avenues that we have to cover before we can legally have this put on the ballot in the fall, came under a really tight timeline. So, we were given this opportunity for our school district, but we didn't have a lot of time to bring it forward for discussion, so.
And the question might be asked, why this fall on the ballot? Why can't we do a special? There's new legislation which requires that it be in a general election, so it has to be in November or it will have to wait till the next general election, which is two years.
Well, there are a lot of things, a lot of, there have been a lot of words said on this since last Thursday, Friday, and not much negative. Everybody knows that this needs to pass, needs to be presented, needs to pass and these five projects are our top five projects. I have no doubt of that. And I honestly believe if you don't put this on the ballot, if this doesn't pass or if this had never shown up on a ballot, these projects, I'm not sure when we would ever get to do them. So, I'm all in favor of passing the resolution and hoping that it passes so that we can construct these five projects.
I'll go further to say that with the previous bond resolution and what would have been nice to have happened had we had more time to work this out, would have been to have a group of, previously, and it worked well, was to have two members of the board from Iredell State School, two from the Mooresville Grade District, some from Mitchell, the superintendents and college president, both, and their finance officers, to meet along with the county finance officer and county manager. What we did at that time, it was, it gave an opportunity for us all to discuss our priorities for each individual institutional group and try to come to some agreement with members of the commission present to prioritize and identify the monetary needs that each district would have to have in order to most likely achieve a successful vote in the fall. That had been the recommendation just a couple of weeks ago from the task force and with the pressure put on, at the same time this process was going on, the county manager and the county commissioners began their role of researching with the state the process that would have to take place to actually have this properly and legally placed on the ballot for the fall. And when that happened, we realized we had put ourselves collectively into a very, very tight time constraint. So, we've had some discussions between the entities represented in this bond over the last couple of days, literally, and we've tried to entertain questions. last couple of days, literally, and we've tried to entertain questions, come up with what would be most likely successful to work within what the commissioners have offered us, that they would be able to do for the fall. And so we've got to make a decision tonight for this process to even happen for November. I think that furthermore, the manner in that, that this has been presented, has been questioned by some, in terms of the amount that each individual group would be allotted in the bond, how the tax revenue would be raised, and there's been some questions about how, how that process would work. But again, I think from our perspective, we as one school system doesn't really have the right to direct another school system for how they spend their money. We wouldn't appreciate that any more than somebody else appreciates us telling them how to spend their money. And the commissioners made it very clear to me several years ago, that when these issues come up, that the role of each board is divided into, the school board's role is to declare and identify the needs of what we have, and present those needs to the county commission. It's the county commission's clear role to decide if and how and when they want to fund that. So I think from a proper carrying out execution of, of that order and our duties, as I've been told by the county commission years ago, and we've operated according to that, is that this was the financial proposal they made to us. We've had a little bit of negotiation over the weekend, but what this final resolution offers is what is in the best interest of what's available to us, you know, from the commissioners, if the people vote in favor, to satisfy our most acute needs, which are these five projects you identified.
And we feel-
So I just wanted to say that for clarification for the media and the public that's represented here.
We feel very comfortable with the seventy-nine-five covering our projects.
Well, I'm not going to be like every other citizen in the county. When this goes on to the ballot, and hopefully gets passed in the fall, I won't appreciate it when I have to write the check for the taxes. But I make the motion that we accept this resolution and pass it on to the county commissioners.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Tried to keep an open mind about this, and we did have a Facilities Task Force, and they did an excellent job. It was made up of committee members, and I think the request that we put forward is, is fairly reasonable. I trust Dr. Miller's numbers, I think he's done a, a good job with that. There's another part to this, if we approve this resolution, it won't be on the ballot just this question. Mooresville Graded School District's question will also be on the ballot, and if we vote for our resolution, this is de facto endorsement of theirs. Now, some of you may disagree with me on that. But this bond package has some very serious equity issues. I, I agree with you, it's not our job to question what Mooresville does. We don't want them to question us. But it is our job to question why our school system, Iredale Statesville Schools, is receiving proportionately less when the taxpayers are being asked to pay for more. I think it's a fair question to ask. If you look at per pupil allocation on this bond referendum, Mooresville Graded School District will get about twelve thousand dollars per pupil, we'll get thirty-seven hundred per pupil. I can't in good conscience vote for this, even though I support the projects that we proposed. The money needs to be divided on a per pupil ratio like it's done in the past. Unfortunately, we're tied to Mooresville's request, whether we like it or not.
Well, at the same time, though, and that's, we're not arguing, it's my understanding that when that comes out, when it comes out on the ballot in the fall, you're gonna get to vote like four times at least. You're gonna get to vote whether or not you want our bonds, their bonds, jail bonds, whatever, there are different votes, it's not one big thing. So somebody might vote for our bonds, but not vote for theirs, not vote for theirs, not vote for ours. So it might be separated, it's my understanding, but it's not correct, correct me.
I think the way that'll be structured is, the two school systems will be pulled together. Mitchell College will stand alone, and the jail will stand alone. So you'll be three votes.
I think the big question for us, as I understand it, and I think we all share, Ms. Schumaker's concern-
I understand it.
I think the big question for us is if we do not make this decision now, we've been given an ultimatum by the commissioners, and I guess I'll call it that. I think it's not meant to be an ultimatum to intimidate us, as much as it is trying to satisfy the timeframe that we've gotten ourselves, again, collectively, I'm not pointing fingers, but it's a timeframe we've got ourselves locked into, that if we don't have this decision tonight, along with the resolution from Mooresville, resolution from Mitchell College and the county, that this will not make the ballot in November, and the next chance for an opportunity for this to come up will be two years from now. Who knows what financial conditions may be then, I mean, I hope they would be better. But no matter what the financial conditions two years from now, we have these acute needs presently, and have had these acute needs for the last two years. And I think our biggest, our biggest question tonight for our school board, in my mind, is whether we can wait two more years for this opportunity to come up. Because as you said earlier, Ms. Schumaker, in, in terms of unity and in terms of, of offering an alternative, or if you're, if we're going to object to something, be able to offer a better alternative, or at least another satisfactory alternative, and I agree totally with that. But as I've thought over the weekend personally, and, and I think we've all discussed it, that I don't know of another alternative we can accomplish our goals of getting these critical needs met without the bond referendum. And so since these have been identified as our most acute needs, I think the motion basically states that people who made the motion second at least, that, you know, feel like we need to go ahead and move forward now. But I certainly respect-
Yeah, I would say the same thing, I agree with everything he says, I think it's true. I'm hoping that somebody will sit down after we get into it and work out, crunch the numbers a little better than they are. Actually, the numbers that are listed on this sheet here are crunched better than the ones that I saw on Friday. So things have happened, and I'm hoping things will happen at this point. I understand exactly what he's saying, agree completely. But I'll call for the question.
We have a call for the question, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One, one other comment, just so I'm not totally going against what I said earlier. There, there is another option, and Cool Springs could be done, it takes some time to work it out, but we could do that project if we could get the quarter cent sales tax passed, and the county would, could do a one-off loan for that project only. So there is, there, there are some options out there. Granted, it wouldn't get all, all four of the projects done, but-
And, and I would like to add to that, though, Mooresville is in a situation, they need this bond, I mean, they've got, they've got structural needs that are critical right now. I mean, they've got ceilings falling in on, you know, possible children in their gymnasium. And I just wanted to add one more point to this as well. If, if memory serves me right, with the last bond that we did, it was very ISS heavy, and Mooresville Graded got very, very little of that bond, if I'm correct, is that correct?
Well, it's based on a formula, ADM. So the amount of money that Mooresville would get would be based on that formula. And we're actually, if you use the formula, we're actually giving Mooresville more this year because they do have those critical needs in this bond. But we may need to come back and ask for a high school down the road, too.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, we need to go ahead and get our maintenance issues out of the way and done, so that we can look at that, that high school that we're probably gonna need in the south, you know, I'm saying eight, ten years away, but it might be sooner than that, yeah.
I think less.
I think that's important for all of us to think about. You know, Iredale County is unique in that we do have two school systems, and they are very different, with their own set of special circumstances and needs and ability to fund projects. This is truly about collaboration, I think, and Mooresville has made it known that they do have critical needs, and they have asked for our support and help in bringing this before the voters of our county. So I hope that we will do that, knowing that one of these years, as Ms. Monham points out, we're gonna need a high school, and I don't know when that's gonna be. I hope it's sooner rather than later. But when that high school comes up, five, six, seven, eight, ten years from now, we're gonna, we're gonna have to depend on the folks in Mooresville to help fund that high school. And so I see this as an opportunity for us to collaborate as a, as a community, and truly look after the needs of all of the kids in our county, regardless of a boundary line that says you go to Mooresville and you go to ISS. So please keep that in mind as you cast your vote tonight. This will, this will come back to us one year, and we will be asking Mooresville to help us fund some critical needs.
With questions being called, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Totally.
Okay, the vote carries.
I'd like to point out that Mr. Rogers is on the phone now, and he would like to vote in this, if, if you don't have an objection to that, so.
I think I have him to speak to.
All right, Mr. Rogers?
Yes?
All right, would you like to cast your vote on this resolution?
I vote in favor of it, yes.
Yes, we have a vote yes. So that gives a vote six to one in favor of the motion. So the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've now, I guess, completed our agenda of the meeting, we've come to time for public comment. We did not have anyone sign up before the meeting for public comment, I'll offer to the audience here, if anyone would like to speak before the board. If not, we'll move on to superintendent comments, Mr. Johnson.
All right, thanks, Dr. Cash. At the risk of saying that I'm beating a dead horse, I'd like to make a real quick comment on the Common Core. We all were a little surprised, although some folks did anticipate the news that we got last week from the General Assembly, that they are moving in a direction to possibly in the Common Core of North Carolina, or possibly amend that. Last Thursday, I was eating lunch and ran into a friend, and that was the topic that he had to discuss over lunch that day, and he said that he did not support the Common Core. So I asked him the question, why? And he said, well, I've heard that if you follow the Common Core, you, these teachers are making kids read material in classes that are inappropriate, and I, I don't support the schools forcing children to read inappropriate material. I wish I'd had this document with me when we was having lunch that day, but I did find this posted on the News and Observer website, and it is a list of Q and A relating the Common Core, and the question of picking literature is covered in this document. So I thought it was interesting to read here, that the only reading required in Common Core is the Declaration of Independence, the preamble to the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and Lincoln's Second Inaugural Address. I've never seen so much misinformation be produced that has had an impact on such an important decision. And I know now that maybe the debate is over and, and we lost the battle on Common Core, but I, I do think that our governor was very wise in pointing out that this was probably not the best decision for North Carolina. So I do hope that in the weeks moving ahead, that the governor will have some influence and will be able to communicate with the General Assembly, and that some type of consensus can be reached regarding Common Core. I'd like to commend Dr. Melanie Taylor and our Curriculum and Instruction Division, because they embraced Common Core three years ago and started very early training our teachers, and our teachers have done a remarkable job deploying Common Core. I think that they have gone on record of expressing their support for Common Core, and many of our parents has as well. So there is still a ray of, of hope out there, that we will be able to come together as a state and find some common ground on the Common Core. Dr. Cash, members of the board, I'd also like to give you just a real quick update on Read to Achieve, which is a major piece of legislation that we implemented in our school system this year. And I will start by simply saying thank you, wholeheartedly, to all of our third grade teachers, teacher assistants, all of the volunteers, to the moms and dads who, who worked with us this year, and to our children, who went through a, a very challenging year implementing this law. Iredale Statesville Schools is set next week to begin our reading camps. They will begin Monday, the sixteenth, and I'm happy to say that the success rate of our students is such, that we originally, we thought that we were gonna have to have six sites throughout the county, and it looks like now that we're gonna reduce that to four. And again, that is attributed to the success rate of our students, and that's why I am commending our teachers and everyone that worked so hard to make this happen. Our four sites will be Enby Mills, Troutman East, and Union Grove. The state has given us some flexibility now on hours, and so we will be reducing it from six weeks to four weeks, and that will help those children salvage part of their summer vacation, too. We've also had some great collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club in partnership with staging for this. The Charlotte Mecklenburg School System is helping us provide lunches at some of our sites. And so it has been a very tough year, a lot of hard work, but again, I, I commend our teachers for the outstanding job that they did with Read to Achieve this year in our school system. The last item that I'd like to update you on is, we are finalizing our budget for next school year, and although we don't have a state budget yet, which prohibits us from knowing exactly the total impact that what the General Assembly's gonna come forward with in way of a budget, we'll have on our local budget, we are at a place now where we are ready to make some decisions, and you guys have, of course, looked at our reorganization plan for the central office. And so Kelly, if you could pull that up. We'll begin our reorganization by announcing that effective immediately, Dr. Melanie Taylor will assume the duties of Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction for the Iredale Statesville Schools. Dr. Taylor has spent her entire career in ISS, she is well-prepared to assume the responsibilities of Deputy Superintendent. This will allow us to continue a strong succession plan for our district and assure continuity of leadership on a daily basis. So, Dr. Taylor, thank you for taking on those, those duties. We will also be combining two of our departments, the Department of High School Education and Middle School Education, and will be forming a new department that will be referred to as Secondary Education, grade six through twelve. Mrs. Kelly Cooper will serve as the Executive Director of Secondary Education. She will also, we will also be combining two of our offices in the operations side of the House, Public Information and Community Partnerships. Ms. Susie Weiberg will continue to lead that combined office. Both these ladies have a long history of effective leadership in our district, and they are excited, at least today, about accepting these new challenges and the extra work that comes along, so we're very enthusiastic about their new duties. Mr. Richard Armstrong will be moving from the Division of Curriculum and Instruction over to School Operations. Mr. Armstrong will serve as our Assistant Superintendent of School Operations. He will be moving his office to Race Street from ADR in the near future. As you know, Mr. Armstrong has covered the duties of our district Athletic Director for the past two years. He will continue to serve in that capacity, as well as serving as our Assistant Superintendent of School Operations. Mr. Armstrong has served many years as a teacher, a coach, assistant principal, and high school principal. His experience at the central office level has also included many assignments over the years, including the Director of Alternative Education, the Director of Transportation, and Director of Athletics. And some of those duties have been performed in other school systems. This vast array of experience will serve Mr. Armstrong well, as he assumes the leadership of our School Operations Division. This reorganization plan will save ISS approximately two hundred thousand dollars annually. It also brings the total of administrative positions at the central office that we have reduced over the last five years to ten, and generates a total of, of more than nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in salaries. So I think it's important to point out that we continue to make really tough decisions- So, I think it's important to point out that we continue to make really tough decisions, and this is a decision that I think will help us balance our budget, but at the same time, will give us a strong leadership team in place to lead our school system beginning in the new school year. I'd like to offer my sincere thanks to all of the members of Central Support Services. These have been very challenging years, particularly during the budget cuts, and I'm extremely impressed by the folks that serve in that organization chart that you see there. They work very hard to support our teachers and our principals and our students and to ma, and to make sure that learning is the top priority in our school system. So, again, congratulations to these folks, and thank you for taking on the additional responsibilities. The last thing that I'd like to comment on is Wednesday's the last day of school. Hurrah! And we do have some graduations coming up this week. Monticello and Presley Alternative Schools will be having their graduation ceremonies midweek, and then our five traditional high schools will be having their graduation ceremonies this Saturday. If you picked up one of the fact sheets as you came in the door back here, I always like to watch trend data on all the numbers. And so, last year, when the scholarships awarded came out, I was extremely impressed because over the last five years, we have raised scholarship offerings in our school district. In two thousand and seven, our students were offered six million dollars in scholarships. In two thousand and eight, that jumped up to twelve million dollars. In two thousand and nine, we went backwards just a little bit, but it was still twelve million dollars. In twenty-ten, our students were awarded sixteen point eight million dollars. Twenty-eleven, it was fourteen point five million dollars. In twenty-twelve, it jumped to eighteen point eight million dollars. Last year, two thousand and thirteen, we really spiked at twenty-two point five million dollars in scholarships. And so, I was talking to the high school principals the other day, and I said, now, guys, you're not going to let me down this year, right? You're going to bring this number in higher than twenty-two point five million dollars. And I haven't heard the number yet. They're still calculating that. But I was assured that the class of twenty-fourteen is going to be one of the most successful classes that we've ever graduated in our school system, not only from a standpoint of scholarships, but getting into colleges, universities, trade schools, military service. This is a very special class of young people and a very high caliber of young people. And so, this is a tremendous celebration for our entire community. And we look forward, not only to Wednesday, but Saturday, when these kids will be walking across the stage and getting that diploma. It's a great way to close out the school year and just to reflect on all of the hard work that takes place to make this happen. And I'm very, very proud of all of our teachers, our, our students, and I'm very thankful for the support of our parents and all of the folks who fund us. And Board members, I'm also very proud of you. Thank you for your service in very difficult times. To our departing school board members tonight, I sincerely thank you for your years of service and say that we will miss you, and I hope that you will not be a stranger. I hope you'll stay in touch, and if nothing else, follow us in the newspapers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. With that comment made about the last day of school being Wednesday, I'd just ask for all of us as representatives of the public and representative of the school administration to keep in mind and try to get the word out, just to remind our public that students will be out, out and about in the community, and we, of course, are concerned about their safety during the summer when they're away from school as much as we are when they're in our school. So, just all of us remind each other to watch out for children. We do not need a closed session tonight, as I understand.
Right.
Okay. So, just as a reminder, the next school board meetings, July seventh, will be the Committee of the Whole Meeting at ADR Education Center at five P M. July fourteenth, Board of Education meeting back here in Aridale County Government Center at six P M. That being said, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
One, one quick thing.
Yes?
Invite everybody to our big parade in Troutman on June the twenty-eighth, on Saturday at eleven o'clock. It's the Fourth of July, it's the Troutman Independence Day Parade. And also, I'm sure everybody knows and read, our neighbor, Alexander Central, their girl has brought home their ninth state softball championship, and they happen to play in the same conference with Lake Norman Mooresville. So, down the road, maybe we can do something from our board to their board to recognize their student and their athletes. They are in the same conference that our schools are here, so try to work on that. Maybe Mr. Armstrong and our board could do that maybe somehow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Schumaker if he would make a motion for us to adjourn. I would like the honor to make the second.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving, we adjourn.
I got a motion.
Chairman, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Hold in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We say no, so we make them stay.